All right, call to open the meeting for Tuesday, November 26. It's 6:05, we're in the Mound Council chambers. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's good to hear.
All right, thanks guys for coming out. We got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
No amendments.
All right. We got our agenda, does someone want to make a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. We got our consent agenda. So anything on here, assuming we pass it, will be approved. Does anybody want to go through the list here?
I can go through the four items.
Okay, go ahead.
Ready to go?
Yeah.
A, approved payment of claims. B, approved minutes from the November 12 regular meeting and special workshop. C, approved resolution approving variance for house remodel addition at 3118 Drury Lane. And D, approved resolution approving variance for detached accessory structure garage project at 2503 Lost Lake Road.
Okay, does anybody want to pull any of those? All right, hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember McNaney?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. All right, all that passed. So if you're here for that, you can leave. All right, so we got mayor for the day. Where are you gonna stay? You can stay for mayor for the day. Was yours on there? All those four items? Yeah, if you're C and D, you're good to go.
Well, I don't stick around as mayor of the day.
Yeah, stay around. Or mayor for the day, sure. All right, do we want to do the video first?
Sure.
Okay, so we had the school district, Grandview, do mayor for the day essay. And we had the principal picked the top three. And so two of them are here, and they're gonna come up and give their essay. And we have one that couldn't make it, so we, they recorded a video for us, so hopefully we can hear it.
Dear Mayor, did you know that this summer in 2021, the average age for mayors was 52.2? I think a mayor's job is to help make and enforce rules in a city. Mayors should be helping make people's lives better and easier. I believe that a mayor should be a leader and kind to all people. I imagine that a mayor's day is as simple as just going out in the city. If I were mayor for a day, I would make a fully wheelchair accessible playground. I would even add a slide that is wheelchair accessible, like a roller coaster. If I did this, more people in wheelchairs could enjoy parks and playgrounds. We will have more people at our parks if we include people in wheelchairs. Everybody will feel more included and everyone will have fun. If I were mayor for a day, I would also organize a cleanup for all beaches and mountains. If I could make this happen, more people could enjoy beaches. Everything will be cleaner and there won't be trash everywhere. People will be able to play in the sand without worrying about trash being around. This would also keep the water from getting polluted. If I were mayor for a day, the final thing I would do is organize a book club every Saturday. If I can achieve this, not only would people read more books, but they would read them together. People will have fun reading and talking about it together rather than alone. Some people like to read books, but they don't want to unless they read together. This would also help us use our mound library. People would want to read a book for the book club, so they would get to my library. In summary, I think I would make great mayor for a day because I care about all people. I want to make everybody's life in the city better. I can do this by making sure people in wheelchairs always have a park to play in, by trying to all beaches are clean, and also by helping people read books too. If I were mayor, I think I could help people to improve the city of that way.
All right. So that was Danny Hayes. And we'll put a copy out on our website or add it to the agenda so you guys can read it. I know it's kind of tough to hear it. So we do have two other winners here as well. Do we want to do Samantha? Sam? You want to do that first?
You want to come up?
Go.
Okay. Do you have it written down?
Um, yes.
Okay, cool. And you can just pull the mic down.
Okay. What is being a mayor like? Is it fun? Is it boring? Or is it both? I think being a mayor is like managing a theme park, but instead it's a town or a city. I wonder, do you make sure no one is sick and make sure everyone is healthy for the people? Do you survey people to see what they need? As you can see, I asked a lot of questions. But one thing I know is that you should go out into the community and see if there are any problems. And talk to people to see how to fix those problems. Let's play the what-ifs game. What if I were mayor for a day? What if I helped you observe problems in the community? What if? What if I were mayor? What would I do? Well, I would try to make more nature reserves as possible. I realized that this city had taken over a very important thing, nature. Nature, specifically trees, have been scientifically proven to improve human mental health. They can promote physical activity and help you adjust to the natural rhythm of the day. They can even make you feel tired. Trees lower blood pressure and can make people think they are not the only ones with struggles in life. Trees are magical. Do you really want to cut them down? Nature reserves can be, can solve big problems in life. It can encourage people to achieve their dreams. Trees already just look good, and the texture can calm people. Nature reserves also keep animals safe, therefore creating a healthy environment. I'm gonna be honest here, I'm a fraud nerd, so let me ramble on about frauds. Fraudsters are indicator species. Indicator species are specific species that indicate whether an environment is healthy. Fraudsters have thin skin that absorbs chemicals, water, and oil, and oils, which is why they are so sensitive. Fraudsters spend most of their lives in the water, making them indicators if there is something like pesticide in the water. So if we make nature reserves, we can protect those special frauds and keep our environment safe. Another thing I would do if I were mayor is make sure all the parks are safe and have more greenery. Greenery in parks provides people with more connection with nature. As I said before about the trees, they are very important to us. Greenery also provides space for people with mental health problems. My sister is autism, and she has to go to parks, and she has to go to parks I go to. Most of the parks are small with lots of people and noisy. If we provide more greenery in parks, those people won't dread going to parks as much as they do. Also, making parks safer with us, with, um, safer with make people trusting government more. If we try to keep everyone safe, they'll trust us. If they trust the government, we can go, we can get more help in volunteering with, and donations. The last thing I would do is try to make, try to host more community events. Community events are a great way to let people out of their doors and get involved with the community. I think this would be nice because people would trust other people more. Some people might get help from others. Say two managers of a store meet, they need help from the other manager. They can also promote small businesses through advertisements inside of the event. This can also promote others to help the small businesses, and some might start working there. In summary, I think it would, I would make a good, great mayor for a day because I work hard to make sure people in this community are happy, and so is the environment. The events will bring people together, more green, safety in parks, make people trusting government more, and trails in nature reserves improve people's mental health.
Very good.
Good job.
Can you look up here and smile?
So I'll give you a thing in a second here, so stick around. All right, Josh, you ready? Do you have yours? You want it?
I thought you knew it by heart, I was gonna be really impressed.
Just for the outline.
Okay.
Well, hello. My name is Josh, and, well, this is my essay. Have you ever wondered why people even have crosswalks? Probably not, but some people don't even obey crosswalks sometimes. That's a big issue in our city because there's a few crosswalks on Shoreline Drive and Commerce Boulevard that are, people drive pretty fast and sometimes don't stop. So I think it'd be a good idea to add lights, like, um, on each side. We have the, we have those at our school, and only adding them on like some, some crosswalks that are, people drive fast on, would help improve the safety of the citizens. This is a thing that the city has brought up before, um, the splash pad at Lost Lake Commons. It's, I thought it was a really good idea, but it would, it would definitely cost a lot of money and be difficult to maintain. I have a different idea for this. You'd have, you could make it like an educational thing, like where you make the splash pad a little thing, like a nature thing, and have like, um, well, information about the water quality and water stuff, and how it affects our lakes and our, our health. And if you did that, you could apply for a grant and get, get money to help, well, build the thing. And yeah, I thought that was a good idea. And my last thing, the dock program is pretty good, except for once. My mom was harassed a few times. And I just had, had to say that this might, this should, the dock program should have this rule, like, it's basically like a baseball game, three strikes, you get moved, and then if you, if you get that three times, you're out. Well, suspended, but not, not out. But that, that would, those were my ideas to help make the city a better place.
That's great.
Thank you. Got one mom on, someone?
Good ideas.
And mom? Talk to Jessie, we gotta talk about this dock program.
Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, good job. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna give you something here. I'll come down.
Oh, sure. No, I'll come.
All right, do you guys want to come up? We'll do a picture and. All right, thank you guys.
Very good.
I try not to get in the pictures once I'm in.
Oh, I could see, I could see you up here smiling.
The value goes down once I'm in.
Thank you.
And I'll get Danielle to her, bring it to school or something. All right, yeah, a couple, just a couple of quick comments. There's some really good stuff in there. You know, the crosswalks, of course, he's left now, but we are, lights are coming, so they're on back order. So they are coming. All right, so next up, we got Citizen of the Year presentation. And I want to say we, as a council, about a year ago, decided that we were gonna start this. So this is the first annual Mound Citizen of the Year award. So this is someone that has to be a Mound resident, and then, I mean technically could be named, you know, or nominated by, by anybody. So we got a handful of nominations and kind of one glaring winner, let's call it unanimously. So I'm just gonna kind of read through this. Mary Purvix has been a longtime resident of the city of Mound. It was in 1950 that her family moved to the city after years of being farmers. Mary grew up in the community and attended West Tonka schools where she eventually graduated from the then Mound High School, now Mound West Tonka High School, and I think now it's just gonna be West Tonka. Professionally, Mary worked as a special education and community education paraprofessional for the Wayzata School District until her retirement. In her pastime, Mary stated that she has always had an interest in the food co-op and farmers market movement. As such, over 45 years ago, Mary started the original Mound Farmers Market in Mound. The location of that market is the same location as it is today. She also started a food co-op that is housed in what is now the location of the current ice cream shop. Both of those programs ran for 10 years. It was 15 years ago, after raising her family and nearing retirement, that she decided Mound needed another market in the community. It was then that she decided to gather a few interested people, and the rest is history. Mary stated that the current market is full of vendors who are local farmers and artisans who sell their own produce and handmade items. She said that the market does not sell wholesale products. Mary notified, sorry, noted how gratifying it has been to see the community embrace the market, explaining that the vendors and coordinators have become like family. She said there have been many formed friendships with shoppers as well. Mary explained that the Mounds Farmers Market is a volunteered managed nonprofit organization in which participating vendor fee revenue is put back into the community. For example, some of, some market funds are regularly distributed to the local West Tonka food shelf, WeCan, and WeCab organizations. Funds have also gone back to the West Tonka public schools to support students in need by covering costs for activities like field trips, books, fairs, prom, and more. Mary said that the market also provides a scholarship to a high school graduate each year. Mary stated that she is honored and humbled to be recognized as the 2024 Citizen of the Year. A special thank you to Mary for being with us tonight to accept her well-earned and deserved award. So congrats. We do have something for, for you here. Do you want to come up to the podium? And then, does anybody else want to say something beyond what I just said?
Well, there's, there's so much that could be said, but I just want to say you're such a example of the spirit of people in Mound, in giving their time, volunteering, and lifting of the community. And every weekend when I can get there to sit down and chat with you has always been just the treat of the week for me. And your dedication is so, so, so humbling and so well-deserved to be acknowledged. Mayor, you're such a go-getter, and you're so deserving of this award. And I can't think of anybody better to be our first inaugural Citizen of the Year. You just worked tirelessly down at the farmers market. Everybody loves it, appreciates it. And, you know, it's been really fun reading your bio because you really do have an accomplished life. And we are just proud as can be to be honoring you tonight.
I must say, I am, I am honored and humbled by this recognition, but you know, it takes a village. And I could not have done this all these years if it were not for the help of three other people who are also volunteer coordinators. Peg Heilman coordinates our free information booth. And Craig and Jenny Gilbertson also are so good about giving input and just helping out and just being good friends. So again, I thank you all, and I thank the community for responding the way they have to our market. We'll see you in the spring.
All right, we're all gonna come down and do a picture with you. The whole council.
I'm gonna take the picture, so I'll be a background there.
Or do you want me to try to take it so that, or one of us, Jessie, so you can be in it?
You should be in.
Okay.
Let me take a few of them. Mary, here, let me get one of you and Mayor Holt.
I'll let you do it.
There you go. That's great. Turn it down a little bit so the lights don't, there you go, perfect.
Let me get out of the picture.
Perfect, thank you. Well, thank you. This is beautiful.
All right, so we'll do a picture.
Jessie, are you gonna beat that camera guy? It's a big response. Okay, all you have to do is press that button, and then it'll take more than one. No guys ever take more than one.
I'm gonna take 100.
Take a bunch, because somebody's always gonna like. Okay, and then I come over here. Move over that way, you guys, so the glow goes behind you. Keep moving, keep moving, keep moving. Jason, move over towards, I'm sorry, Mayor Holt. Okay, so you just can't, your back, because I just dropped it.
There, is that better?
Our Mound was falling, our O was falling down.
No, the O was falling down. How did I do it? I learned that in law school.
I'm a pro. That's true.
You didn't mention this in your resume.
I'm a pro.
No, I trust you.
I was thinking, first and fix that O, I shouldn't have done it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's all it is.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, here's a box. You're gonna go right home and hang it up and.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mary.
Thanks. All right, next up, we got comments and suggestions from anyone present that their item is not on the agenda. We had to bump this because the mayor essay people wanted to get out of here.
Yeah, I have a couple things, but really just one thing I'd like to address.
If you can give us your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Eric Troyan. I live at 4321 Willshire Boulevard. And first, let me just thank the council, mayor, staff for all the work that you guys do. I know it's, it's, it's tough work, it's not always very glamorous, but, you know, it's very much needed. So legitimately, I sincerely appreciate all that you guys do. I'm here to talk about the water. And not that it's sometimes brown, or expensive, or has manganese or low pressure, I think you hear that a lot. But rather, something that's come to my attention recently, and that is the fluoride in the water. And for months, I've wanted to speak to the city council about some of the problems that I see about putting fluoride into the water. But I wasn't sure how I would explain my position without sort of sounding like a conspiracy theorist. Now, fortunately, a study was published in August that shows, among other findings, that there is a link between higher levels of fluoride exposure and lower IQ in kids. This study was published by the National Toxicology Program, which is part of the Department of Health and Human Services, or DHS. There's also a recent ruling in California that a judge, I think actually cited that study. And I want to get a little more details on this and actually maybe send some things to the council and to the city staff. But the judge was concerned that, at any level, that any amount of fluoride, the risks outweigh the benefits. And this was in the state of California. So given that, I feel like, you know, now there's maybe some ground to stand on and come here and, you know, and make my position to the council that we should stop adding fluoride to our water. And as a kind of a side note, the US FDA has never approved fluoride compounds for ingestion, based on my research. So, you know, while there are dental benefits to putting the fluoride in the water, and there's some history to it, these benefits may be significantly outweighed by the negative repercussions by adding fluoride, which is recognized as a neurotoxin. You know, and, and if you kind of look at the history, fluoride was being added to the water before we invented things like fluoride toothpaste, fluoride mouthwashes, you know, you can get it directly from the dentist, etc. So there's now maybe alternatives to get fluoride directly on the teeth rather than needing to drink it. And I try to keep this to my allotted time here. But, so, you know, I didn't speak to the council immediately in August when the study was published. You know, I got kind of busy, perhaps the fluoride made me a little lazy. I don't know, but I'm speaking to you today in part because I anticipate that this topic of adding or not adding fluoride to the water may soon become sort of a partisan issue with the incoming administration, and specifically the pick for the next head of the DHS, which incidentally, you know, published this recent study in August. Yeah, it's maybe indicated that they, that they want to have cities stop adding fluoride to water supplies. So I wanted to kind of get out in front of the council and, and kind of bring this issue forward, you know, before it maybe becomes a partisan issue. And, you know, there may or may not be any recommendation from the new administration, and it may be something sort of in the middle of do your own research or something. So I wanted to kind of get the dialogue going. And I'd like to follow up maybe with an email to the, to the council and maybe the city staff, whoever that's appropriate to send to, you know, with, with some of the links to the information that I have found. You know, and I understand that this is something most cities have done for decades without much questioning. But sometimes it's those entrenched practices that are seldom questioned that are by definition the practices that deserve the additional scrutiny. So, you know, fortunately, if the council were convinced that the harm exceeds the benefits, I think that, you know, the fix would be pretty quick and simple, much simpler than manganese. You know, we just stop putting it in the water. You know, one last thing I'd like to note, the fluoride in our water comes from fluorosilic acid, which is actually a toxic hazardous waste byproduct of fertilizer production. This is not the fluoride that was first put into water supplies in the 40s and 50s, but rather began in the 80s, I believe from guidance from the EPA, which is sort of strange that it wouldn't, that it wouldn't come from a health authority. But, so, thank you, and I strongly believe that we need to give this matter the urgent attention it deserves so that we can give the brains of our youngest and most vulnerable residents the greatest opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Well, and it's also an indicator of Alzheimer's, so it also is for the elderly, not just the young.
Sure, yeah.
You have no argument from me, I've been doing research on this for years.
Great.
Yeah, I, I think maybe our, maybe Jessie can comment on who and what gets put into the water?
Well, at, at the wells we pump from the ground, fluoride and chlorine are used. And that's from the Minnesota Department of Health mandates that, so.
This is more of a state. I mean, you're gonna, we can make a ruckus here, but we don't really have a choice. It's, it's drops per, what, million or billion or some? I don't know if you guys have toured our plants, but that's all they're doing is just drop, drop. I mean, but we don't really have a choice, we have to do it. You know, we all agree, yeah, we can make a ruckus, but we still gotta, I mean, that's, that's what our manganese was issue. The Minnesota Department of Health said, hey, you have this issue, we're all of a sudden testing for it, and now we have an issue, right? But yeah, fluoride or, you know, or, you know, we're doing those, well, chlorine for sure did clean it, right? Because we don't have a treatment plant, but, yeah, we don't have a choice, so.
You know, you can write your legislators.
Yeah.
That, that would be the next spot to take your argument, but great presentation.
Well, thank you. I guess that would be the next step, then? Yeah, you can follow up with him, and he can connect you with our local state. You know, you know Representative Myers, and then our new Senator Coleman. Yeah. Okay. That might be better suited, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Want to come up and just give us your name and address?
I didn't bring anything prepared, but Keith Royger, 310 Blesley, Mound.
Yeah.
This is just more of a comment. This is just more of a comment. We walk the Dakota Trail quite often, my wife and I. And it says no motorized vehicles, and I don't want to be that old man who's complaining, but you're starting to see a lot of these e-bikes and the younger kids going very fast. And I think it's something that will need to be addressed at some point if it hasn't been already.
We, just so you know, we have talked about that at our police commission meeting, although the trail is Three Rivers. There's a lot of overlap because they'll go on there for a couple minutes and they'll go on the street. I mean, I'll see them on the main commerce over here. I saw two eleven-year-olds probably, just going faster than me. So we are actually having a police commission meeting in two weeks, so.
I helped a drunk guy up. He wiped out on the trail.
A drunk guy on his bike?
Well, he was on something. Clearly needed help, so accidents have happened.
You mean, he crashed his own e-bike?
Yeah, he caught the edge and he wiped out totally.
I might be wrong on this, but if I remember right, I think they either are looking the other way on the electric bike issue, or they're more or less approved. Now, that's not a motorcycle, right? But these e-assist bikes, and they're very popular, right?
I could, yeah, I was gonna say, I can speak on that for just a second, so like, you know, whether it's like the opinion on like, you know, like what's too fast and what's not. When you get an e-bike, it's like what's supposed to only be on the trail are the class two. Like, they stop at, you know, you're maxing out your speed and they stop at twenty miles an hour. They can't. It's the ones, the kids that have like the, kind of like the dirt bike looking, or some of the other ones that are class three, and they go like thirty-four miles an hour. Those are not supposed to be on any trail.
Okay.
But people aren't listening, and then.
And the problem is, Three Rivers doesn't really patrol their trail. And we don't really, well, I mean, it would be ornol police, but, I mean. They'll get them once they get off there if they're acting like fools.
Well, I thought the bikes were intended originally for us elderly people. All of a sudden, you see more kids riding them.
Yeah.
So it's switching, I guess.
Bikes, yeah, I don't know. I know a lot of people that have even just the assist, and that finally gets some exercise.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
And now, and, you know, I'm an original biker, I don't have an e-bike, but I'm a biker biker, and I've done regby, you know, five hundred miles across Iowa. And then I see these people, you know, on Facebook, oh, look at me, I just did fifteen miles. I'm like, really? On your e-bike? Like, that doesn't count.
I think Wayzata and Excelsior might have put some sort of additional, like, a city ordinance in place because they were having like really big problems with like the gangs of the kid bikers and doing stuff. So, I mean, it might be something to look out for, but it's like a Three Rivers.
We'll talk at our, we have a few topics, I think, now that we're gonna talk about.
My wife just brought up the crosswalk, and she said, if you go into the meeting, let them know they should put lights up.
Yes, we.
They're coming, they're coming.
The bases are there. Yeah, the bases are there. They're coming.
Okay.
Yeah, they're ready to go. They're just on back order, so. And once they do come, hopefully, well, we might wait till spring now, but we're gonna actually go out there and do a ribbon cutting, because this is a long time coming. Maybe not in the middle of winter, but.
One last thing, I live close to the old trailer court that, I don't know, is, just out of curiosity, is anybody ever gonna build there?
We did have a proposal. The council basically decided that we were kind of getting pushed in a corner with the lot that they were trying to do on, you know, the mound side. And then the Minnetrista side was, you know, beautiful, nice, big homes. But then we were gonna get this sliver of, was it townhomes or whatever? So we basically said, reconfigure it and come back, and I haven't seen it back, and this has been at least half a year.
I'm just curious, because, I mean, I don't know how many people that's gone through and nothing happened.
There are some other issues too with the topography of the land.
Yeah.
It'll be challenging to develop, but we don't want to be the stepsister in that lot, so.
Right. So we'll wait for a better proposal, and maybe they'll do the Minnetrista side and leave the mound alone. I don't know. I thought I saw a little bit of activity there. Drove by the other day, but if I remember wrong.
They usually park their trucks in there.
Oh, that's what I, okay, that's what I saw. Anyway.
Just curious.
Yeah, thanks, Keith. Appreciate it. Thanks. Alright, number eight, we got ornol police department activity report. And we did just get the PDFs before the meeting, so. Yeah, we got the report. Yeah, if you want to give us an update.
Okay. The information I've reviewed is probably for the last, from October, the full month of October. Again, I apologize for missing the last couple of meetings. We're pretty busy right now. We're in our training season. We wrapped up two weeks ago with our firearms. So we are, we are, I should be here now. I should be present, so. But for October, we, I went through the reports, looked at everything. I'm not seeing trends coming. It's just our, what we would probably call day-to-day business for us right now. It's slowing down significantly. The last few nights, we call it our South Main, has not had any activity on it. I mean, that's Plymouth, Minnetonka, Hopkins, no activity. I mean, just with the weather. It's like shocked people and everything slows down on us, so. But with that being said, we still are dealing with our assaults or disorderly conducts, domestic-related incidences, medicals. Theft and swindle, I kind of starred that. My investigators up at the ornol police department kind of want to start reminding people now with the season coming in, the thefts might be spiking a little bit, and that's due to packages sitting on front steps. We are, we try to educate people as much as possible with this is to know when your packages show up and get them removed as quick as possible, because that is a big crime of opportunity for people. Drive around our area, see a package, grab it, especially if the package is identified as, you know, seventy-two inch television. It's gonna probably not stay there very long, so we try to encourage people to, and hopefully we keep that down this year. And then everyone coming out with cameras and ring doorbells have really helped us solve a lot of that issue too, so. Vehicle accidents, that's where I start. They're kind of sloping now with the removal of all the cones in our area. Seems like Shoreline is now flowing so much better. Seems like people are enjoying the openness now and not fighting with the stop signs there. But everything else seems to be just leveling. We will probably have a spike once the weather warms up again. We'll be a little busier. For now, though, the guys are out. We offer a service of house checks when people go away for the winter or go away for a couple of weeks. So we've been very busy with those. We've been, we have an app that we work on where the guys just go house to house to house, check doors, check properties, make sure nothing's been tampered with. And just to provide that service to keep our guys busy and moving through the wintertime. And then also, starting in November now, just the last week, we are now enforcing winter parking for the streets. So will be out, I think, my guys were ordered to do warnings for the first couple of weeks, and now I think they're switching over to full-on citations for the events. And that's to keep our streets clear for plowing, because if they don't do it, then when they go plow, we do have to tag or cite and tow the car. So we try to avoid that. We don't, initially, we will go up to the property and knock on the door, try to get them to come out and remove the vehicle, but sometimes that doesn't happen, so. Other than that, that's most of what we've got going on now for the winter months coming. Just some things that chief, deputy chief pointed out, maybe last week was the annual tree lighting in mound. It seemed like everything went well. It was a good turnout, and said everyone seemed to be enjoying themselves, so. That was good. I talked to our SRO officer, our school resource officer. She wanted me to bring up a few things. In the last, well, it's kind of unprecedented, she says, she's had twenty stop burn violations this year already. And that's quite a bit more than she had last year. She's basically dealing with one to two a week now. So she wanted to reach out and try to get some information on your social media, if she could, about people slowing down and being very cognizant of school buses at school hours. Because it's kind of getting overwhelming for her, and she doesn't know why this is going on, but we're trying to curb that. Also, she wanted to report too that she just finished her sixth grade dare graduation, which will be December twelfth. I think she was gonna reach out to you and let you know. And then, uh, now, that's all we've got going on. In one week, we will have our newest member of the ornol police department starting with us. And she will be starting during the day shifts, but she will be starting her FTO field training process. And she is an experienced officer. She'll be basically a lateral hire. So we're hoping for an abbreviated field training, and she's gonna be filling our vacant position that's been vacant since September.
Do you guys have other postings that are open right now, or are you guys staffed otherwise?
We are pretty good to go with sworn officers. We have a cadet program that we have where we have two aspiring people that want to be officers. One is attending St. Thomas right now, and one is attending Alec Tech, and he will be cleared to start in May. And he will start his field training process. We are looking to fill that cadet spot. That cadet spot is basically our community service officers. But they kind of hype them up a little bit more. They do more stuff with us and more of a training process to become a police officer. So that will be coming up very shortly here. We will try to start filling that void.
Do you fill those through the high school, or how do you find your?
These two were actually our explorers. So our explorer program, they applied, they were hired. We reach out to colleges, high schools, any law enforcement program that might not have an opportunity. So we try to get it out there. We use their social media, we do all that. But typically, if we have a good explorer group, they will have a couple takers that are graduating from high school and want to apply for the position.
Do you have a, just a quick comment on our resident comment about the e-bikes?
The e-bikes are, they're tricky right now. We don't go on the trail that much. It's not ours. When the guys are out on the bikes, they do hit them. They have stopped a lot of these e-bikes, because the kids are young and they're flying past us and they're causing issues. So it's more of an education thing. We have gone straight to parents, you know, take them home. But we, I guess we're looking for more guidance from what can be done, but like helmets, I mean, if we don't see helmets, we stop them. If they're ripping down the middle of the road, we stop them. We're just trying to get it, to educate them, that, hey, you will get hurt, you know, if this continues, so. Three Rivers, I know it runs this trail. We don't have a lot of contacts. They're spread out so thinly over the area. I think they work mostly, like, if there's a complaint in the area, they will come to the area and patrol it, because we had troubles with those stop signs on the trails years prior, where people are flying to the stop sign. And then they come out and they will actually watch the problem, try to curb it by citing, educating, and making their presence known.
And again, we'll talk more in our meeting, but it's good to know since he's here, so. Any other questions?
I have a question. You know, the fire department has, well, across the state are experiencing increased calls for falls assist. And I'm curious as to how many of those calls are you guys also at those? Because I know a lot of times, there are three different groups appear at home. Police, fire, and then emergency services.
So you're looking at how many are we answering call for? Well, we answer as many as we can by ourselves. We, if it's a fall, there's two different categories. There's a fall and then there's a lift assist. Lift assists, usually, we go out, if myself or another officer can lift them, we just lift them, and we make sure they're not injured. The falls are a little different, depending on what you got. You got falls with head strikes, falls with injuries, stuff like that. Then it's just usually us and the paramedics. We don't auto-start the fire department for much. If it's something we think we need help with, we will auto-start them, or we'll start them over the air and let them know we need some help. Sometimes the ambulances will do it. If they foresee some issue, they will start the.
But you guys will actually do a lift assist?
Oh, yeah.
Assist, okay.
Yep, especially in private residence and stuff. I mean, we know there's people that want to live alone or live in their residence. We will go out and help them, and mostly it'll come in the middle of the night or in the early morning hours, so we go out and do our best. And if there's something we can't do, then we start mound fire with us.
Do you have a rough number, or could you get those numbers to us, of like, what we're hearing in our fire commission is, I mean, they get called for a lot of things, and.
Sixty-seven percent, nineteen percent lift assist out of the medicals.
And that's what they're saying that they're already showing up for? It'd be nice to know how many that they didn't do, because you guys did it. And part of that is just to see who's doing them all. But the other thing is, and again, this is maybe more of an us problem, but what is a better option? Is it maybe having an emergency management district or something that, you know, if these are just, like, we don't want to waste your guys' and the fire guys' time getting called all the time for, just to pick someone up. Now, if it's just that, that's one thing. If it's a heart attack or, you know, something bigger, obviously, you know, call everybody. But it'd just be interesting to see what data that you would have.
Right. Right, I think what the issue is, is we, I know we've had this meeting before with our staff, is there are certain entities in our area that should be able to handle it without calling us?
Right.
Like lift assists, but they are, and.
They keep calling you.
And they keep calling, where we have to kind of draw a line in the sand and say, hey, you're capable.
Right.
And.
And now they're taking advantage of the municipal us, right? And all the taxpayers in our city.
Yes.
And as well as your guys. It'd be, yeah, interesting if you could somehow find those facts. Again, I think it's December tenth or twelfth or something like that. We're gonna do our commission.
You want to know exactly, like, lift assists?
Yeah, and again, you could just give it to us in that meeting when we go. It's, you know, eight in the morning, whatever.
Okay.
Second week of December, but.
For the next council meeting, or?
No, it's the fire, or the police commission meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah, the chief will be in.
The chief will be there, yeah. And I was gonna mention that anyway. We actually just had a discussion about this before this meeting, so. And then we're gonna ask him about the other e-bike thing too, but, yeah, it'd just be good to kind of know. And then if there are repeat offender businesses that are taking advantage, what can we do? Or maybe give some advice too of, you know, hey, this place always does, I mean, maybe we ought to sit them down and have a conversation.
Yeah. Because we just went to one a week ago, and it was clearly we needed to be there. I mean, an elderly gentleman fell off his bed. And I mean, that was something that, but there's times where we're like, you know, like, really? That kind of, but. So I will notify the chief about it and see if he can get the straight numbers on it for you.
Yeah, just have him ready for the meeting, and then we'll bring it back to the council. But that wouldn't be until the new year, but anyway, we'll bring it back eventually. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you too.
Okay, number ten, we got, or no, number nine, we got consideration action on ordinance amending mound city code and resolution regarding cannabis retail business registration.
So as we have been sort of advancing here on cannabis, one of the things we've been waiting for is for Hennepin County to put in some parameters for business registration. Hennepin County's offered to take on business registration, much like they do, much like how we use them for our cigarettes, or tobacco, rather. And while we don't know all the facts on it yet, one other thing we do know is that Hennepin County's not ready to stand that up yet. And while Minnesota's Office of Cannabis Management's still having some issues, just as recently as yesterday, the gist of it is, we don't want to be caught without something, a way to regulate business, if in fact we need to. So I can kick it over to Scott as he put this together, but that's the gist of why we're back yet again regarding cannabis.
Sure. Mayor and members of the council, as you may remember, the local control for the new cannabis laws is limited. There's two areas that we can control. One is zoning, and the city council has already enacted zoning code provisions with regards to that control. The other is. The other is registration. This is not licensing, it's registration. The way it works out is that once Office of Cannabis Management does issue a license, the next step is to come to the city for registration. And under registration, the Office Cannabis Management will ask the question, do they meet the zone, no, do they meet the zoning code for where they're at? I think there's one other consideration and also have they met the limit for the number of licenses that can operate? And generally, if you meet those three conditions, meet those conditions, then the registration's going to be, it may be more ministerial act with regards to it. There are some fees that can be applied for both the initial registration and renewals, which are annual. The, so what you have in front of you today is that registration. And the idea here is to have that in place as the city manager provided, so that we are ready, so that, so that we have that control. If and when Hennepin County has something in place that can be reviewed, it can always be replaced with Hennepin County, if that's the desire of the council. So the purpose of this, and if there's any questions on the detail of this, please let me know. But what we've done here is that with the registration, there's one dispensary for twelve thousand five hundred, which we talked about. We also limited the number of low potency, like the edibles and the drinks of five milligrams to three within the city.
Places.
Three, yes, three registrations.
Three, three registrations for?
For the whole city.
For selling?
For the low.
Yeah, for selling, for this is all retail.
Okay.
For retail. Manufacturing is a different, is different, there's no registration required for the manufacturing, this is all retail registration. So it's one dispensary, which is going to be the flower, the high, the high potency. Similar to what, and I, I do want to state too, is that right now the city does have, have a licensee, licensing program for the five milligram. That will remain in place until the state has their licensing in place and issuing licenses, and then it'll be preempted. So we'll continue to operate as is. And then that, and then those three registrations that we talked about for the lower potency hemp is what we have right now with regard to five milligram.
Like at Harbor Wine Spirits?
Yeah, the Harbor Wine Spirits and the next door, and the next door, they, they have something too. It's, it's those products that are there.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Sorry.
No.
Did I cut you off?
Um, I always like to be cut off because then I can start.
No, 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 no.
Then I know you're listening.
I thought you were segueing, but I.
No, no, please, please go ahead.
I think you answered one already, but on page two nine seven seven, so like for ineligibility. There's nothing that says, you know, like failure to pass a background check. But is that because this is just registration, not licensing, so that's not relevant?
This is all we're allowed to do under the statute.
Okay.
Okay. The licensing, the background, the bonds, insurance, all that is taken care of at the state level.
Okay.
This is, they have to have the license in place, place with the state, and this is what we have for local control.
Okay, I didn't have any other questions on it, all that was just that, so.
Okay. And, oh yeah, remember I said there's three things? There it is. Those are the three things that we basically look at.
Okay.
So the whole point of this is, and how we got here, just in case people watch this and go, what are we talking about? Is that to, to grow, that's where we, we said you could only do it in, in one district, one area. Which is kind of about a Jubilee area, right? And then, so we already did that. This is saying now we can kind of control a little bit of how you're going to get a license.
Well, remember, correct. That was the zoning we talked about. So that, that's, there's, remember, the local control is two parts, there's zoning and then registration. Zoning is where it can be placed, and we're allowed to, to have certain buffers from certain things like parks and schools. That's what was done earlier. That dealt with both growing in and also the, the dispensary too, the retail. The, so, and we, and one of the, so that's taken care of. This is just saying, okay, as you can see from thirty-eight dash four oh five, one of the questions is compliance with local zoning ordinance. So are you allowed in that zone? Okay, so you're allowed in that zone. Is your building up to state fire code?
Right.
And building code, okay? And are they allowed to, have you reached the limit? That's it. And so the zoning is an important aspect of what we're talking about here.
So hypothetically, because we were so restrictive on our zoning in the first place. The odds of us getting three places is very low.
Well, we did, we, with regard to the buffer itself, for the low potency, because of, because of the mound harbor and then the existing businesses, they were exempted out of that. But we may want to, we talked about, I talked about with staff, revisit that as, do we want to have some kind of modified to make sure that we can allow kind of the status quo to ma, to, to remain? But right now, if they came into registration, the low potency has a little bit more flexibility than the, than the higher potency. Now, I will say I was talking with some of the other attorneys in my office on this. And because we're kind of in uncharted waters, the Office of Cannabis Management put together model ordinances, which I'll say were not that instructive. That I, what I'm contemplating is that as we move along in this process, what you see in front of you today with regard to zoning and with regard to this registration is going to change. And we're going to be coming back to you again, looking for code modifications. But as of what we know today, this is probably, this follows what the statute provides.
And this is us being basically restrictive as we can. And with, and for now, and then again, whatever the state does, or the county does, that we have to live with. But at least we're doing what we can for now, until that happens.
Correct, and, and you want to have, and the idea is that you're allowed under statute some limited local control. Here it is, and so this is what we're putting forward. So you, so the, so if, if residents want to know that the city itself cannot prevent cannabis use, cannabis retail within the city. But through zoning or registration, there is some control on where it's located and how many you can have.
Yeah. And again, so we're, again, for those who are listening or reading this later, we're trying to make this as restrictive as we can for the council's request. We could just say nothing and do whatever, and then it's just la la west. And some people might want that. But we're, we're trying to actually be more tighter.
Yeah, and, and my, my thought, thought on this too, is that with, with regard, especially with regard to zoning and this registration too. You know, the coun, the council makes a decision and the policy on where they want it. And it can always, based on, I should say, direction from the state or the courts, it can always, or the, or subsequent councils, it can be, it can be modified. But right now, the, the, the city council made a decision with regard to zoning to implement the maximum boundaries that are allowed. Basically, the maximum control that's allowed, so, which creates the location where it can be, and then the number of registrations that are available.
And being that this is an ordinance, do we need a four-fifths vote?
This is, no, you do not need a, you need a four-fifths vote on the, on the summary publication resolution, but this is by simple majority. This is, all this is, is a business license.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, so we got a realized resolution or ordinance, proven ordinance on page two nine seven five, right?
Yeah.
So that's by title and summary, don't we need a four-fifths on that?
No, on the, on the resolution for the summary publication, so we're going to take it in two parts.
So the first one we don't.
Yeah, first, yeah, first one is for the ordinance, that's simple majority. And then by statute, if you want to do a publication summary, then it needs a four-fifths vote.
Okay.
And I do urge you to do that because it helps keeps the cost down for the city.
All right, does someone want to make the first motion?
I'll make a motion that the city of Mound, ordinance number blank blank, amending mound city code regarding cannabis retail business registration. This, the city council of the city of Mound does ordain.
So.
Just that first one.
Yeah, so it's, it's a motion to, to approve or enact an ordinance amending mound city, city code regarding cannabis retail business registration.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion, can I get a second? We're doing just, this is two nine seven five.
Just the first one, yeah.
Yeah, second. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that one passes. And then the next one is, if you look at your.
The agenda.
Agenda has the verbiage there.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yep.
You just say, just make a motion to approve resolution.
There you go.
If someone wants to make that motion.
So you would just say a motion to?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four, authorizing publication by title and summary pursuant to Minnesota statute four one two one nine one. Subdivision four of ordinance amending mound city code regarding cannabis business registration.
All right, we got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Two seconds? All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that passes. Okay, so now we're on number ten. Comments, reports from council members, council member Pugh?
Well, like, well, we were all there, but the Christmas tree lighting ceremony was a great opening to our new park. And I, I just want to say, it was really great to see like our public works employees had on their jackets, the firemen had on their jackets, the policemen had on their jackets, and the council was present. And it was just a really delightful thing. And I, I assumed that Catherine did the picture frames, of which she took, must have taken a hundred pictures. Talk about.
I think more like five hundred.
Almost five hundred. I, I thought I should be conservative, you know?
You were good, doing a good job shuffling everybody in and out.
Yeah, I was shuffling, I was getting, giving people frames and getting lined up for her. But it was just, it was a really good mound family night. You know, families were out there and the fire and the lights. It just shows the potential of our new space for future events. So I was very excited, and I got a ride home by the police.
A good ride home or bad ride?
A good one, a good one.
Anything else? Okay, council member Larson?
Just to continue on that same track as council member Pugh is, I would like to say a big thank you to you, mayor. Because this has been, I just, I appreciate the way that you put your mind to something and you push it as hard as you can. And it shows because it's not going to drag on until next year. You got it done this year, it was the beginning, so thank you for your hard work and pushing this because it's gorgeous down there. And when the next phases come in, it's going to be wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, council member Mac.
Yeah, and I echo both. I mean, it was just a marvelous night, the, the WCC did an awesome job. The city works, public works guys did a great job. Jesse, you helped there, working hard.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just a really fun event, and fortunately, we had a beautiful night of weather.
Right.
So thank you to everybody who worked real hard on it.
And thank you to you, you got a, you got a lot of the work.
It's a lot of fun.
Yeah. All right, council member Castle.
I, I don't have much. I thought, I guess, I don't know why I thought Sarah might be here tonight, but one thing I mentioned at our docs meeting too is that, just to get this to anyone who might be listening or watching. That we have two openings on the planning commission, and the deadline for applications was pushed until like the end of December, I think. Or longer than it was, because there was a problem with the ad in the Laker and it wasn't, you know, out in time. But, you know, to get as many applicants as we can, they're looking for two applicant, two applicants for the planning commission and then one for the parks commission, so. There's a little bit more time to apply for anyone that might be interested. That's about all I got though.
Did you want to mention Jay?
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't, you know, super comfortable doing that, I didn't know him personally, but I think it's important to mention Jay Sewell had his funeral, I think it was last Friday. Unless I'm, I'm wrong on that, but.
Or Saturday.
He was a really big, important part of our community and important to a lot of people in our community, so. I think it's important to recognize him.
I forgot, planning, not planning, parks commission at our next meeting in December. We've invited the residents who live around Chester Park to come with their ideas about how we should renovate that park. So we're kind of excited about seeing, you know, is this a good opportunity to sort of reinvent that park? And also to talk with Alan Almas, because they benefit from the park and we benefit from, from them as well. So how we can strengthen that sort of public-private partnership.
I think it would be pretty cool if we talked about possibly renaming the park after Jay Sewell. You know, Alan Almas has brought so much to the community.
All that part?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And you know what, you brought up a good point that I should have, I forgot to mention. The planning commission, at our last meeting, they are going to be starting meetings at six o'clock at the beginning of the year. So I think all the meetings now.
Is docs?
No, we're, we're still.
Parks are still.
Parks, but aren't you going to start on the first, first of the year, weren't you going to switch?
First of the year, but no, we're still at seven.
Okay.
All right, so I just want to just talk a little bit more about the holiday event. So remember, we, we had a workshop, right? And we, we talked and we said, hey, it'd be nice to have kind of a lighted tunnel, you know, walkway. I just want to say thanks to Jesse for coordinating that, as well as the public works, I mean, phenomenal job. I, I went there, well, I drove by a couple of days before and I was like a little nervous because I didn't see it done. But they were working on it somewhere in a warehouse or something, but. But phenomenal. I mean, you know, in my brain, when we had brought it to the workshop, I was like, it'd be really cool to kind of have like a walkway. We have this beautiful, brand-new stamped concrete walkway that's going to last for a long time. Just couldn't have done a better job, so I, I already told Ryan and the guys, but just send them more. Because they, they deserve it. And then this morning, I met with Congressman Phillips and Congresswoman-elect Morrison, and then also the group of mayors in the area for breakfast. They, they do like a mayor quarterly thing typically. So it's good to, to be there and, you know, in a room of twenty people, there's only so many people that can talk. So I jabbed mine in there right away and said, we still need help on water, we still need, you know, these things going on. So, so advocating for, for the city, and they, they know, they know. You know, Congresswoman-elect Morrison, you know, the ten point three million that she helped on. It'd be a little different on the federal side, but whatever they can do. So behind the scenes, I'm trying to advocate for that. The other thing, you know, again, some good ideas came out of that workshop. In January, I want to call it workshop for, sorry, you won't be there.
No.
But our new you will be there.
The new me.
The new you. But I want to call it workshop.
Paul is irreplaceable.
He's never going to be a new Paul.
You'll be fine.
So, but I want to call, call it to order a workshop. I think we're talking potentially either doing it a separate Tuesday or maybe that Tuesday before. The nice thing with doing it the Tuesday of our first meeting is that it's, it gives us, you know, an hour, but it only gives us an hour, right? So I guess for the four of us, I'd ask, you know, start thinking of what we want to do for next year. You know, coming into like, what's our priorities for twenty twenty five?
For the workshop in January?
Yeah.
But you're saying this workshop will be prior to one of our two?
Well, we can talk about what works for everybody. If, if an hour. If an hour works, I think last time we did it right here, and I feel like we went a lot longer than an hour, if I remember right. But a lot of, we had a lot of good things that we talked about.
Yeah, and we'll come more organized.
Right.
This year, knowing that we have it coming up, because we did get a lot done on that meeting.
We do, and I think having it before a council meeting though, like, makes us be more productive too, and we could, you know, hopefully, if we come prepared, finish it before one meeting, but we could also continue it at the next January meeting and get it done in two hours.
Are we open to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's just do it before our first January meeting? Unless you have something to say about that.
I'm trying to remember, because I think that was one of the first couple of weeks I was here, but that was a, is that the same thing as our joint meeting with Planning?
No.
So, that's February?
That's February, yeah.
I don't remember if you did that, but it's the Planning, the Planning Council joint meeting?
That was February, okay.
I want to say March, actually, yeah.
I knew it was early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think the Planning Commission in March, or in January went over like their priorities to bring to that March meeting.
Okay.
So, let's just plan on, at five o'clock in the room, just come with, you know, your list of what we want to accomplish for next year, and then we'll get the message.
What is that date? The first January meeting?
The first January, the second Tuesday.
I haven't asked for you, could you send the priorities from, this would have been like your first meeting, but like, if you had the priorities from this year, what we said, like, could you send that to all of us and then we'll know, we can kind of stem from there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Kind of helps me not forget about some things.
And we reviewed those too a couple of months ago.
We did, right.
What we've done and what we haven't done.
Sorry, Jesse. So, we're going to have, was it five or six weeks in between our December and that first January? And it just, I already told her, but council member-elect Eric technically will be January one. Although she, if something happens where we need her, we need to swear her in, but she'll be technically swearing on the fourteenth, but anyway, we'll talk more about you next time.
Okay, are you done and then I saw her?
No, no, I'm not done yet.
Okay, when you're done.
One other thing, you just mentioned this, but do we want to do a volunteer appreciation event, like, never like we did two years ago? We rented out Surfside, we kept a tight budget, but again, what this does is it recognizes people that are outgoing on the council, but then also, you know, our planning, you know, all our different departments, and then plus, you know, our staff and stuff too.
Shouldn't do that again.
Yeah, I thought it was great.
Just replicate it, it was really good.
Should we just do it in the same place and same setup?
Yeah.
We all agree? You have to just show up.
Who knows if I am going to be here?
Alright.
Might be moving to Texas.
Texas, back to Dallas, Fort Worth?
Okay, so let's plan on early February? Should we do that?
Yeah.
Late January? What to find, what to start getting it out there so people can reserve the date?
Yeah.
Do you remember what day of the week we did last?
The last time we did it, you sent out emails to all the retirees or people who are no longer in their term, and then we did gifts, you know, for each of them.
For them, yeah.
So, once you get that list, if you want to send it to me, I'll take care of the gifts again, and I think it was mid-February to the end of February last time. I've got the date at home.
Okay.
I can send to you.
So, it has to be not on a Tuesday and not on a...
I think it, I think it was a Monday night for some reason.
Okay. So, Jess, could you start figuring out a good day that works, that's not on one of those planning nights or parks or... Okay, you have another comment?
Well, as long as we're talking about workshops, I just want to bring this up. And I was hoping with the police contract with Orno, that we could at least send them some kind of notification by December thirty first, because if we don't do it then, we're on the contract with them for several years, correct? I mean, it's like, three more years plus five? With the Orno police right now?
Well, if member serves me right, I think you're through 2028, and then after that, it's another five years on top of that.
Okay.
But the contract, the current contract runs, I believe, is it twenty twenty seven, twenty eight?
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, make you right.
Yeah, but somewhere, but you, so anyways, the current contract term is five years, we're in it, and it's going to end around twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, somewhere on there.
Okay.
And then, the renewal term for the next renewal will be five years.
Okay. If it's not going to be a doable thing for various reasons, then I'm going to back off and just say, I just thought that perhaps we could at least send them a letter, but if we think, you know, there's no way we're going to get that done, you know, if we're getting some pushback, and then I would probably step back and say, no. I would say that's okay, but I would make a general suggestion that, I mean, I've been told what it would cost us to bring our own police department back, and I think maybe that is something this time that we should put before the voters of Mound. It should cost us, and we're not going to do that today, it would be at a two-year election or something like that. I think it'd be nice if we had a referendum to ask our constituents, what do they think? Are they fine with having a group police department with many cities involved? And, or if they're thinking that maybe we should go back to having our own police department? But I don't know, I mean, I know how I feel about it, but, and I know that you've been making some inquiries, so.
I just personally don't see, what's the other option?
Yeah, and it...
If we can't start our own, that's just too expensive. And then what other, I mean, we can have more discussions with Minutrista, but the first one didn't really go anywhere.
So, I don't know if we want to, maybe if we had more discussions with Minutrista, because we've talked about the fire and the police and being effective and efficient, at least I have, that it would be nice, it'd keep the communication together with that public service of fire and police, instead of having police over in Orno and then having our fire area here. I just think it'd be a good idea if we send them a letter just in case something arose, but that's me. You're opposed to it, and I don't know about the rest of them, but we have kind of talked about it, I do think it's something that needs to be looked at, but that's me, but I'm not going to be here to fight for it, if you know what I mean?
No, you won't.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So...
I, I'll just throw it out there, I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to the new Orno. We'll see what happens, right, over there? We'll get a taste of it, I guess, but I'll be honest, I didn't really have any interaction with anybody but the, you know, police council, which, not, I don't really, I didn't really interact with their council, right?
Okay.
Orno council, but I'd be curious, I guess, to see what they're looking to do, I don't know if they want to change it or not.
Then you do realize their population is significantly lower than our population, but...
We pay them, I think, according to bill, then they pay, right?
Pardon me?
We pay the bulk of their bill, right?
Yeah, and, oh yeah.
Yeah.
So, anyway, okay, I tried, that's all I can say.
Am I right on that, right, fifty-three percent?
It's about fifty, but then, so they also cover Spring Park and Manta Beach, so I don't know what Orno's...
So, we're the biggest part of the police budget?
Yeah, and I know they are doing things over there right now, I do know that.
Yeah.
And I think if we weren't part of it, I don't know if they would be making those plans frankly, if, I mean, I think they're making an assumption we're staying on, that's what I think, so...
For the police?
Yeah.
I mean, we have six weeks or whatever at the end of the year, but again, I...
But I'm feeling from you that you, you know...
I, I, I don't, I like, I love Orno police, I really do. I think they do a really good job, they cover us. Again, I've been to the commission meetings, I think, I just don't have the same feeling personally, but for the council, I went over and talked to Minutrista, and it just, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of interest as well. So, I mean, that would be, that would be the other option, right? The third, I guess, would start our own.
Yeah.
Or, I don't know, who else we could share with or something, but I don't know, I mean, we got a lot of other things going on with, you know, the fire district or the fire JPA if we do that, or... And I get, I get that, but when I talk to both the fire and police people, they're, I mean, they do interact a lot together, and, you know, even if, and if we do this fire thing, it's not like we're not, you know, we're merging with all, and it's all one thing, and we're still Mound, they're still over there. So, I don't know how much more interacting it would be versus not, so. And that's what I'm asking.
I think what you're saying is the partnership, if we're all coming from the same city, would be, might be a little more effective, because they're talking to each other. You know, the police and the fire chief, they're under one roof, under one umbrella.
They do that anyway, but I get it, having around the corner would be better, because they're right there, but that doesn't mean that they're not here in our town, and, you know, they have a squad here all the time, and I see them all over the place. I, and we see the reports, I mean, I think they do a hell of a job, and I think we have a really good contract and budget. So, I don't know, even if we did over, you know, move over there and say, say people are interested in that, I know that the cost wouldn't be the same, it'd probably be higher, you know?
Why do you think that?
Well, that's what I'm told from... Am I wrong on that?
Well, we have had, I mean, I know the, our increase compared to our colleagues that are on Orno PD, ours is the lowest for the last couple of years. Obviously, it's tough to say exactly what it would be if, say, we jumped to Minutrista. I can say compared to, just based off the audited financials from the last time Mound was operating a police department, we just now going into 2025 will be paying more than what we were paying in 2012. So, whether that's a testament to how cheap Orno is, or, you know, it was just more expensive to operate our own, I can't say exactly, but I can say it's, I don't know what else is increasing at a, basically a flat rate for a decade, you know, so it's, it would, we'd have to do some due diligence, but I mean, it's, it's sort of like the chief says with water or fire, I mean, I think we, the contracted service is a very good deal.
Anybody else want to say anything about that?
I guess I'd agree with what you've said. I'm happy.
Yeah, I'm sort of neutral on it. I do think there is an advantage of, because these things take a lot of time to have in process, a way to review it, but I also think that, as I'm hearing from my son who's crying in the blues about being a homeowner right now, he says, you always tell me to vote these things and my taxes have gone up and the insurance has gone up. And so, I'm not sure that if we took something to the voters and said, would you support a new police department, and this is the cost, that they're ready to take on that cost? Because, you know, taxes went up, insurance has gone up already, and people are concerned about the water. So, priority, water, water, water. But I think that we need to not lose sight of the fact that there may be a day when we will need to reinstitute our police department, because we see, we're the most stable city out here on the lake. The rest of them have been, you know, all over the place, and so, I don't know that we can, in a long-term picture, rely on those partnerships and relationships always. It's like why you prefer joint hours versus the district. Yeah.
So, let's hypothetically, let's say we sent them a letter. I mean, we, do we have to say we're leaving, or do we have to say, hey, we're looking into it?
The current contract we have right now is if you want to not renew the contract for another five-year term, you have to send them a letter. It's not, we're looking into it, is we don't want to do it.
Right.
And the idea, I'm assuming the policy behind it is it's going to take, there's, takes time for the separation, and, you know, and so that's what the three-year period, period is for. So, if you want to do it for the end of the year, you send a letter, and if you say you're looking into it, that's probably something you'd do two years ago to kind of let them know, to start negotiations, or so start, you know, to start the process. But it's still, that wouldn't be enough to get it, get it done. But anyways, for the end of the year, you have to send a letter saying, we're not going to renew the term.
And again, we're in it for five more years.
Yeah, because we're in the current term right now, and so, although it works out is that during the current term you're in, if you don't want to have the renewal term, which is a five-year term under the contract, you need to, you have to do it three years prior to the end of the term, the current term.
So, I just, is this bad timing, I mean, really? I don't think we have enough time to look into this whole thing, even if, I know we started talking about this a couple of months ago, it just...
Almost a year ago. We've been talking about it for a long time.
We workshopped it for the first time. You guys have had issues with them for a year, but we actually workshopped it a few months, handful of months.
Hold on, the issue was about monitoring Surfside.
Right.
That's all.
Right.
So, don't make it a bigger thing than it is.
Yeah, so you guys have had issues with Surfside monitoring, right?
And that's over, because it's taken care of.
So, they fixed that, so why are we, what else are we, what's the why behind, you know, if it's broke, don't fix it, right? Like, what, I don't know, I just don't see a reason to do it.
As I've said, from day one.
If we had two more years to figure this out?
Yeah, I have no problem with the Orno police at all, I'm simply saying, as, as, as the business of the City of Mound, to be proactive and looking to see if we can benefit at all financially from combining the fire with the police, and I've said that from day one.
This is not about Orno Police Department, in my opinion, what they do or what they don't do. This is about our constituents and the care and the service that we can provide for us in the City of Mound. I personally think that if we had our own police department like we used to have, I think the care of our constituents would be ramped up, that's my opinion. If we don't do anything by the end of the year, which means we're talking three more years, which we're into anyway, and then we're in for five more. Yeah. So, I don't know, I think it's going to be a lot of money to bring our own police department back. I don't know if our constituents feel they would rather have our own police department, that would make, make them feel better if we had our own staff back here, which our, a lot of our people did go to Orno, the police went over there. But it's, you know, I, you know, this has been around for a while, and I just, I just think it'd be more effective to have our police coverage and our fire coverage together, instead of having police over here in the headquarters of, you know, what they do, and then have our big fire area that we're doing over here. But if we're not getting any positive feedback right now, then maybe it's just, it's not going to happen.
I just, I'm not getting, I never, I don't know if I've ever gotten any negative feedback on the police. And I've got, you know, why did they pull me over for this, or, you know, but nothing like, I can't believe you guys are with Orno, you should start your own. I've never had anything with...
That's what a referendum would do, they would tell you.
Well, and...
But anyway, it's okay, you know, I, it's, it's just one of those things. And if we're not, but Jesse's making some calls and you, and if we're not getting a positive thing from those calls, then maybe it's just...
If we want to start our own, that's one thing.
Yeah.
You know, I just...
Well, if we want to start our own, we better think about, rethink selling the Centennial building, you know?
Yeah, we might need this whole thing, yeah. Yeah, we'll put the company, yeah, put them back over here.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I just think the timing's terrible, plus, I mean, we have a long-term finance plan that we just instituted, we're kind of getting back on track, getting out of debt. We're talking levy next, next time.
It's about service, that's all I have to say, it's about service.
But I, we looked at the Minatrista and the, and the Orno service numbers and the comparisons. Orno's phenomenal, so, not saying that Minatrista's not. And not saying that if we don't put our people over there, that it can't get better, but it's pretty good. It's really, I mean, the numbers that I got were, I, I don't know, I just, that's, that's where I'm at. I just, I don't see a reason to do it personally, but I think we're kind of split on it, so. It's a, it's a five-person council, so. We could workshop it again, or we could, we could do whatever you guys wanna do, so.
Frankly, I was looking forward to more cooperation, to switch, and it doesn't seem like we're getting that kind of feedback, so.
Cooperation from Minatrista, or from the council, or what? Just both?
If we, in my, this is my humble opinion, if we switch from Orno, and we have to give them plenty of notice, we have to have police coverage. I think police coverage in Mound might be, well, I was told twenty million dollars, and this was a couple of years ago, um, by somebody who knows what they're doing, and, uh, we would need to be, I think, financially involved with another city with their help, and combine those two, like with the fire. I just don't think this is one-sided, and if we're not getting any positive, yeah, saying, yeah, we'd like to think about that, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. I think it's a dead issue then, frankly. That's what I think, for now.
Yeah, so.
Well, thank you for going to battle for it.
Yeah.
To, to at least explore.
It's a lot of work, it'd be a lot of work to bring it back, but anyway.
So, we got six weeks, do we wanna do anything or not?
Just speaking for myself, I don't.
Okay.
This, not in the next six weeks.
Okay, so we're kinda like two against it. We got three more people, so what are we gonna do?
You know, Jason, or Mayor Holt, Mayor Holt, when you went, when you talked to the Minatrista.
Yeah.
You know, you didn't convince me that you went in with, with great salesmanship, because we know you're not for it. So, I, I don't know who, you know, maybe if Mr. Dixon has talked to somebody over there and can give us.
He was within the meeting, do you wanna say what happened?
I've, without, I mean, I've had some private conversations as well. Um, I think the, the main concern coming from anybody that would wanna take on the city of Mound, obviously, there's only a couple of options, but the question that was raised is, what is not being done here that they need to fix, you know what I mean? So, and Minatrista has indicated that they would be open to at least hearing us out if the city council were to send over a message from the full council saying, this is, we wanna explore this, but that was just speaking to the mayor, and, and she, of course, doesn't speak for the rest of the council or, or the police chief, but that was the main thing that I got out of it, was just, if, if we had an itemized list of, you know, ten things or just, or five things, whatever, just the, that, were not being accomplished that we, that they thought they could, then it might be something that was more received. But I think their concern, without going any further than some of these conversations and workshops, is just, what if we get down the road and it turns out the thing that the city of Mound needs is not something the city of Minatrista could offer? And unfortunately, really can't answer that question until we really actually do a study or, you know, spend that time, so. That, that's high level, you know, fifty thousand feet on some of the, of the conversations I've had, but, I mean, they've been superficial as well, because it's just, it's, I've taken it as far as the city councils sort of asked me to, or what I've perceived from the conversations we've had. Otherwise, you know, until such time that the city council votes to move otherwise, obviously, as a staff we continue to work for with the city of Orno, and, um, so I'm not out there exploring it on too deep of a level on my own, just, but you've had some conversations like you do.
So, can we come up with a list of five things that we're not happy with, with Orno?
And like I said, this is not about blaming Orno for anything.
I know, but that's, that's what I, what I got out of the meeting is, he maybe said it better, but, why, why do you guys wanna leave? Why, why are you gonna come here, and then in five years from now, are we gonna do that one thing that you don't like now? And then we're gonna wanna jump the ship again?
I think because we've been talking about this fire.
Yeah, the fire thing.
This fire thing, and I think.
We did talk about that, too. Said that, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and, and I'm just saying, I'm trying to figure, I, I, as a council member, would like to provide the best coordinated, public safety services for our residents here.
Right.
And I just think the configuration right now is not good. But if we're being, if we're not getting cooperation, shall I say, I mean, we're, we're being asked to do some things, and if the, say, the favor's not being returned, I mean, I mean, it's up to you guys. If you're okay having police over here, and they're okay with the fire over here, and we don't have them together, it's nothing about what Orno is doing wrong, I'm, I'm not gonna go down that road, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm just talking about the best public services that we could provide for our citizens of this city that would be coordinated. I think it's really logical, but that's me, to do it together. But if we're not gonna get that cooperation on the other side, then I, we have to stay with Orno then. Maybe.
I mean, you, you just said it.
Maybe.
So. If you wanna start, if you wanna start our own thing.
Yeah.
That's different. I, I just don't.
That's optimum, that, that's, to me, that's the best.
If we had a lot of money.
You know, we've got a fabulous attorney here, so I think whatever we decide, he can, he can work his magic.
I, I can draft documents, I just can't print money. But, I mean, similar to any joint discussion, any joint powers agreement, or whatever agreements, I mean, those can be done once a decision is made by the council.
It's not like we're not spending money right now on police.
No, I know.
We've got a pretty big budget, and like, what was it? How much do we pay over there, or what's the percentage? Is it forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one?
Fifty, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, no, I, it's a lot of work, I will tell you, it would be a lot of work. I just think the, uh, public services would be more coordinated, and I think it's better for us.
I, I just, with the timing, I just don't know how we can get this done by the end of the year.
A letter?
Well, we gotta send a letter to them, to Minatrista, like you was just saying, why we're looking to make a change, blah, 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 right? And then, then we gotta pay for a study.
Yeah.
Right? You gotta write a check, pay for a study, and they gotta study it. I mean, it's gonna be over by then, and we don't have enough time if we preemptively say, yeah, we're, we're out. And then we're not, or, you know, then, that's the whole thing, right?
We're, we're, we're in for at least eight years right now with Orno.
Yeah.
You know, I just, I have a different compassion for our people in this town. I, I don't think it's all about twenty-five cents or fifty bucks. I think we need to provide the best service we possibly can, and have it coordinated, efficient and effective. I think this division is just not effective and it's not efficient. And a lot depends on where the fire goes, in my opinion, to what, what's going on with the fire coverage.
And again, in my discussions on both of those committees, is there's a lot of coordination between both of them.
The fire and the police?
Yes, daily, if not more than daily.
That's exactly my point.
Right.
Orno Police does not go into Minatrista, un- unless they're giving, trying to give me a ticket, then Orno does go in. Orno does go into Minatrista, trying to give me.
So, there's a Minatrista fire call, Minatrista Police.
Yeah.
And our Mound Fire will show up.
Yeah.
Right? Now, if it's Mound, it'd be the opposite, right? It'd be Orno Police and Mound Fire, or not Orno.
It wouldn't be.
If it's Mound Fire, it would be us and Orno Police.
Yeah.
If they need.
But if it's fire, if we move, if it goes, it would be, yeah. I'm just saying, I'm trying to think.
In a perfect world, if this was like two years ago, and this is something that we all wanted to look into, I agree with you. I just don't see the timeline working out. I just, I don't know how we're gonna get it done, we're, we're not gonna get it done by the end of the year, for one thing. Again, I'd be curious, but I don't know, again, from what, from what I got in our one meeting.
I, I know, we've, we've talked about it. Jesse and I talked about the cost.
Yeah.
You know, it's a lot of money, but there comes a point where we need to.
The number one thing I hear is water, 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 water. I never hear about, our police is terrible, I can't believe we're doing.
This is not about.
Okay, or even our coordination should be better, you know? I hear water, and our fiscal situation is terrible as it is, so we're trying to get out of that hole.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
So, we have a good contract with our police force that I personally like, and I, I would like to continue with. Eight years, that's a long time, I get it. And, but, you know, gives us eight years to figure something else out if we wanna do that, you know, look into it the right way.
Well, by then, we'll know what's going on with the fire.
Yeah, maybe, it said, they say five years. Five years it takes to figure that out.
So, that would give us three more years to write a letter if we come up with a different idea once the fire gets solved.
Yeah, well, and again, at the end of the day, you, I mean, you can break the contract, I guess, but you'd have to agree to break it.
Yeah, I mean, one thing to remember, too, is that if, if a party, uh, uh, the, the right to terminate is, is that unilateral right of the city to terminate the contract, or both sides. You can always come to an agreement for a new termination, so that's always a possibility, too. Um, it just, that takes some negotiation, but, so.
And, and I would feel better if I knew where this fire thing was going.
Well, we'll know in the next couple of years.
Yeah, you know, as far as the coordinated.
The next five years, right?
Next five years, for sure.
We'll know.
The coordinated services.
So, again, that gives us three years to keep listening to what happens in the fire meetings, and then we can be proactive at that point if we see opportunity for police coordination. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Does that make you happy, Paula?
No. But I'll agree to disagree with you guys, so I'll agree to disagree. But, yeah, I mean, I, I'm, it's just a logical thing to me, but, anyway, okay, I'll shut up.
All right, anybody else have anything else?
Um, no, not me.
All right, I'll take that motion to adjourn.
Um, well, sorry, I thought we were, do we go over?
Oh, sorry, comments from staff, sorry.
All I was gonna say was just, um, thanks for all your kind words, especially on behalf of Ryan and his crew, because, uh, I think they really enjoyed it. I don't know that they go out looking for extra projects, but I think some are more fun than others, and I can tell they all really had fun with that, so.
Is there anything we need to know about, like, eleven D at all, for the liquor compliance checks?
That's upcoming.
Okay.
Oh.
Um, there will be a hearing, uh, same as we had six-ish months ago, so.
Okay, all right.
So, bottom line, someone got a third, it's a third, right?
Correct.
So, well, is that on the tenth, then?
I'll have to talk to Kevin, I, I think he was shooting for that, otherwise it'd be right away again here.
Okay, so remember when you get a violation, we take their license away for, the first time it's a couple of days, second time it's.
The police did a, uh, oh.
Compliance check.
Yeah.
Compliance check, so they're serving without.
Got it, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So.
Okay, good.
But well, yeah, the next meeting or two, we'll invite them to come, too, next meeting.
Yeah, I, I think he said January, but either way, it'll, it'll send something out, it'll have to be noticed for the, um, business owner.
And noted that, um, city code and state statute doesn't require the timeframe for when the city council would hear this regards to the civil penalties, so, I mean, that's within, I mean, within, it, it's, the only issues we have is regard, is provide notice with the, with the due process rights. And so, in what you said, you're taking care of that.
Right, I would say, more than anything, it, I tried to stay out of Kevin's wave with the elections and everything, so, uh, we're getting back to normal, so we'll be back.
All right, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, and can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
And happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes, yeah.